Led by Board Member Teresa Lawson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And welcome to the May 18th board meeting. So glad to see everyone. Roll call please, Mrs. Vaughn.
All present.
All present. Thank you, everyone. It's good to see everyone here. Approval of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion made by Jessica Fogarty, a second.
Me.
Second by Amy Johnson. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Opposed, Mrs. Vaughn.
All in favor. Thank you very much. Okay, special items. I would like to read this about contract consideration. This is from Tennessee Code Annotated 49-2-202-C1. No school board shall extend the contract of a director of schools without giving notice of intent to do so at least 15 calendar days prior to the scheduled meeting at which action will be taken. Giving notice as required in 49-2-202-C1. That was done on April 20th at our Board of Education meeting. Including the proposed action as a specific clearly stated item on the agenda for the meeting, such item, for the convenience of the public attending the meeting, shall be the first item on the agenda, which it is tonight. So we're moving to contract extension consideration for our director of schools.
So I'd like to make a motion to extend the contract for Dr. Katrine Stevens for the director of schools until June 30th, 2025.
Second.
A motion was made by Board Member Jessica Fogarty, a second by Pat Welsh. If there are any discussion?
Well, go ahead.
Okay. You go. Thank you. Dr. Stevens had an excellent evaluation that was completed by the board and she received an excellent score. It has been a very trying year in her very first year as a president. And fantastic leadership. We have so much to look forward to. And I feel that her original contract was three years. So she is almost completed, which is really hard to believe, isn't it? The one year, so we have two years left. And I personally am wanting to continue this with Dr. Stevens. And we're just getting ready to start working on our strategic plan, which will be a living document and definitely will be going on out there. And I see you as our leader. And I support the motion. Is there any more discussion?
I was just gonna say I felt confident making the motion for the idea of I hope that it shows a vote of confidence from the board. Dr. Stevens said, to Kim's point, we value your leadership. And I think that continuity is gonna be so critical to Tullahoma City Schools. So that's a big driving reason for myself. And I do think it should be lifted up because I thought about your interview the other day and what a different scenario we were all under at that point. And how you just championed through this year. And I think that as we've gotten to the close of the year, just seeing how successful this has gone has been a true testament to your leadership. So that's all. Does anyone else want this microphone?
I might add, since I have a question, how'd you come up with 2025? The answer to that is that's state statute law. Director. Since we're all going around, it's been a pleasure. And I know I was the first one to say, well, to your interview, and we laugh about it now, I really wanna see some secondary experience. Well, I'm pleased to say you have truly shown me that I was incorrect. You have been a pleasure. You have been a motivator. You have encouraged, and you have shown what we can do in the midst of trials.
I hadn't planned to speak tonight. I second everything. I watched your interview while I was in Buffalo, New York. I wasn't even here. And watching that from a little laptop in an airport, that was it. I knew right away that you were the person, and I have not regretted my decision to hire you. And I have full confidence in your leadership skills and in your enthusiasm, which is great.
Okay, thanks, everyone. So the motion was to extend the contract for the director of schools until June 30th, 2025. All in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. All opposed? Mrs. Vaughn?
All in favor.
All in favor. I think that we really need you, Dr. Stevens. We really appreciate your words. We think that let's let you all know I'm home. And having your confidence and your appreciation about not crazy, I appreciate that, because that's what I do. It's appreciated. And I just love locking arms with teachers who get sitting at the table, and especially all of those who are out in the audience. I could not do what I do without these incredible people that are part of Tullahoma City Schools, and that every single person that's a part of Tullahoma City Schools. We work together, and we have a whole unit. So I just appreciate everyone. Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Stevens. Thank you, thank you. What a wonderful, wonderful way to start the meeting and to end the year. We're going to move on to individuals to address the board. Do we have anyone here who wants to address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item? Seeing that there is no one, we'll move on to retirement recognition. Now, this is a happy bunch.
Yes, this is a very excited bunch. Tonight, we are celebrating an amazing group of TCS employees. If you go out to Twitter and check out TCS Public, you will see them very excited about this evening and this upcoming retirement. Together, they have served in education for a total of 286 years, with 236 of them being right here in Tullahoma City Schools. Each person here this evening, each retiree, has made a profound difference in the lives of the countless students over the years related to their service to TCS. I would like to introduce the principals and supervisors to you so they can share about their particular retiree. And retirees, you know this is the fun part, but you're gonna come down and up the steps right here on the stage as your principal or supervisor shares with our school board and our audience all about you. We are honored to recognize each of you. You are an amazing group of people who have given your lives to serve and support students, families, and colleagues, and we certainly wish every one of you well on your next chapter. First, I would like to welcome Mr. Hargrove down front to begin sharing about his retirees this evening. And he has four of them.
Does that one work, Timmy? Diane, I'm a little disappointed. We had a little tech problem there. I didn't see you breaking any work speed to try to fix it.
She sat quite comfortably, didn't she, Mr. Hargrove?
Yes, she did. Smiling.
Smiling ear to ear. I almost believe she was entertained, don't you, a little bit? And this might have been a special surprise just for you.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. We have four folks that are retiring. Ms. Sonya Ho cannot attend tonight, but she has dedicated 29 years of her professional career as an educational assistant at East Lincoln. Although, if you've ever watched Sonya teach, she's more of a teacher than she is an educator. I mean, her expertise. But Ms. Sonya, I'm sure Ms. Sonya and Perry, they're all out and about with their grandchildren. But Ms. Sonya Ho, Sonya Hoog is the first retiree. Ms. Joyce? Yes, you get to come up on the stage. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Joyce has been part of our Tullahoma City School family for, since 1999. She has a huge heart for children, especially, come on right out here so the light can, there you go. Huge heart for children, especially our special needs children. And if you want to know the definition of what tough is and what a survivor looks like, you're looking at her. I'll always appreciate your resolve, Ms. Joyce. And I feel confident you and Mr. Richard will be frequenting our many state parks along with your grandchildren. Ms. Joyce has a huge heart for kids, and she'll leave a hole in our CDC classroom this year. Joyce, thank you for your 22 years of service. Tammy Smith? Now, while Ms. Tammy makes her way to the stage, she's a legacy. Her mother was a teacher and part of Tullahoma City Schools. She taught at East Lincoln as well, along with the East Middle School. Ms. Tammy started her student teaching experience in 1995 at East Lincoln under Ms. Jean Horton. And she has taught first grade RTI in the predominant, most of it has been in the fifth grade. Is that correct? Tammy is old school, and I love it. The world needs more Tammy Smith in it. I want, I work, I get. And I've never seen a teacher reach kids. If you go to Tammy Smith's room, you're gonna leave there learning, knowing how to read. And your persistence and your love for the children. Mr. Raymond, we've got everything about ready to go. Yellowstone. Where's the other place we're headed? Blue Ridge? Blue Ridge Parkway. So she will definitely be twirling her way, her and John and her son's Chris, Mr. Raymond's out there. Tammy, thank you for your service to our students. You have over 22 years in our, in our school system, and we're gonna miss you, Ms. Tammy. You're an awesome person and have been an awesome teacher for us. Thank you. Ms. Will Cox has been a teacher for 41 years. 22 of those years have been with Tullahoma City Schools. She has taught kindergarten, first grade, third grade, fourth grade, served in our tech department, RTI, and the Did You Know Fact of the Night. She's even taught art. How about that? She's a behind-the-scenes teaching ninja. And what I mean by that, you never know she's there. She doesn't call any attention. She's been twirling all day with the G A R party, and she's a behind-the-scenes ninja. And you see her work and the positive student outcomes that she produces. You make a difference every day in our classroom. I did get the opportunity to travel to Boston with her to a conference. Excuse me. And we went out on the Freedom Trail, and it is about 13.5 miles. And Ms. Kimsey and I got to experience that with you. And we saw King's Chapel Burial Ground, Benjamin Franklin Statue, Boston Massacre Site, Cops Hill Burial Ground, US Constitution, Bunker Hill Monument. 13 miles in 105 minutes. I want my 13.5 sticker to put in the back of my car. All I know is Dan better have his teensy strapped on tight come Monday. Michelle, thank you for your heart and your service to our students, and we'll miss you. Now, Tammy and Michelle, you know we're in need of quality subs, right, Dr. Stevens?
That's right.
Is that yay? No? Thumbs down? Okay, gotcha. That's 117 of the 286 years we are, we're losing at East Lincoln. We're gonna miss their, their knowledge. We're gonna miss their expertise and their craft, but most of all, we're gonna miss their heart, their heart for their students. And you guys always know, you're always welcome at the Eagles Nest, but thank you to you for. Next is Ms. Mary Gilbert from Robert E. Lee.
Well, it's an honor to be here tonight, and I just wanna apologize before I even get started because I'm not gonna be able to share with words just how incredible the next two people are and just how special they are to me. I wanna start with Chris Gregory, who's here with us tonight. Chris, come on up and have lots of nice things to say about Chris. And just wanna start out with, first of all, Chris has 20 years of experience as an educator, and he has truly, truly blessed our lives. And it starts out with, he was at Robert E. Lee and also East Lincoln Elementary. And he's just an exemplary educator, but he's also witty, fun, passionate, and he's viewed as a role model. And one of the things I was reminding Chris of just a few minutes ago was back in September, and I don't remember what year it was, but we were, you know, wearing some different hats, and there was a dinner, and it was actually for school board. And Chris, you probably remember this just like I do. We were trying to make it nice and special, and there were glass plates in the cafeteria. Ms. Cindy's here, so she's gonna remember this story, too. Did an outstanding job like they always do. We had chicken casserole, green beans, and we go out, everything is just beautiful. It's perfect. Cindy and the staff, cafeteria, they've done an amazing job. Everybody's there. And all of a sudden, somebody comes back and they said, "The plates are cracking." And so the heat of the glass plate made all of the plates on the tables that had been served start popping and cracking. And we're trying to quietly go around and find out whose plate has cracked, and how do we pick one up and carefully slide it in or let them know? And so we weren't laughing that night where we, Chris. Cindy, were we laughing? But we did later, we survived, but we had lots of memories and lots of special things. But that's just one of them because Chris was wherever the activity was, and if there was a program or something special, he was all in. And Sandra is here with him tonight, and I don't know how many hours she spent helping decorate, create costumes.
All of the above.
Yes. And I think even Scott was telling a few minutes ago, just of all the quick things that you would pull off, and Sandra would be right there by your side helping out. And so we don't forget those, those memories. That was so special. But Chris was also awarded as our Teacher of the Year. He was twice Teacher of the Year. He was also named Tullahoma City Schools Outstanding Elementary Teacher of the Year. He was involved in lots of things. So I know I'm gonna leave some things out, but just to tell you a few of them. The Tennessee Arts Academy headed up our special W L E O newscast where our students took everybody to all different places on a journey and visited lots of places. And we actually kidded Chris about all the places you were gonna go to after this. But also with that, he organized and led PTO programs, Christmas programs, unforgettable plays, and costumes, and stage settings that were so cute, creative, just really added that extra special touch. And not only was that, there was Veteran Days programs that just touched your heart, CEO programs. And actually, Chris wrote the songs for every CEO partner that the partners would come to us and say, "We can't wait to hear our songs again." And so, Chris, that was really special. You took the time to really think about every CEO business partner, and you created songs that the children would perform, and everybody looked forward to it every year. So then after that, also developing student voices, taking those young voices, and then they would become singers, and you had choirs, and you continued with that on your own time, working on many of those things with the students. But also was a lead teacher for many different things, served on interview teams, anything that there was, Chris was all in. Took leadership responsibilities, he mentored teachers, and that's just to name a few of the many things that you did that we, we thank you for. Also, I asked a colleague to write something. I just said, "Is there anybody that would like to share something special?" And I just thought I would read this tonight because it really touched my heart. Chris Gregory has been a source of strength and inspiration for me throughout my professional life. From the time I observed him teaching as part of my certification work, I knew we were gifted with a brilliant teacher, and I knew that this person was an example that I had to live up to if I ever wanted to believe that I was doing a good job. Whenever I needed advice, he was there. If there was a massive decision to be made, I could count on the wealth of experience, knowledge, and personal integrity to help guide me. I've told Chris for many years that he simply cannot retire until I'm ready to. And this person said, "I wish it could be that way." So, Chris, we just want to say thank you. You, you have blessed our lives, blessed me personally, our students, and our entire district, and we're better because of you. So we say thank you. The next person I'd like to share is Dr. Lisa Henry, who also has just so many, has so many wonderful qualities that I love, and I'm not gonna do justice tonight either, but I would like to try. So Lisa, it's just an honor to be here and a privilege to say that I have been able to work with you. And so Lisa has 25 years, but I want you to know that she also said 24 years and eight months.
Eighty-two and a half six days.
Oh, eighty-two and a half six days. Yeah, so it makes sense. So we wanna say thank you. You've, you've done a wonderful job, and she's been a wonderful educator and colleague. Also, you've worn many hats, so we'll take you on a little journey with some of those memories. And I think one of your students was here earlier that you coached and was talking to you about that. So Dr. Henry has worked at West Middle School. She has been a PE teacher and a coach. She's taught health and physical education for 13 years at West Middle School. During that time, she coached middle school track for 13 years and varsity softball at Tullahoma High School. So you can tell anytime we hear the word "coach," we know many hours and going above and beyond. And so then she also served as a school counselor at the Tullahoma High School for six years, working with sophomores and juniors, and providing that extra touch, that extra love, that commitment of helping students take that next step where their life was gonna take them. So from 2015 to 2016, that is when Dr. Henry came to Robert E. Lee and became the school counselor. She wore many, many hats there, and I'm gonna name a few. So she was a 504 coordinator, she served as the LEA, and she served on various leadership teams. She was willing to step right up and take the lead and help with that. The CEO, she was the co-chairman and spent many hours working with our business partners, creating some special events, and providing those opportunities for our students, which was wonderful. She organized Career Day, New Student Orientation, greeting our new students, making them feel welcome and at home. Of course, this year was a little different, but did a great job. She was also a mentor to lots of our new teachers, really looked out for them, and kinda took that extra touch, and do you need anything? And you even did that with me. She would come by, and she knew many times I was not eating lunch, which is pretty much daily, but she would come and check on me. "Do you need something? Let me get something for you." And Lisa, that meant a lot. Yeah, yeah, she was really great about that, so thank you. Also, Dr. Henry worked really hard with our S P E D department, and y'all just did an amazing job creating our new referral system, and that was really effective. And you spearheaded that, and I appreciate that with all the hard work that you did and did a great job to better meet the needs of our students. And I also wanna say she's not only touched my life, but for the students. And that might be from the morning, standing in the front, greeting, giving hugs, you know, checking on them, helping them get out of the cars in the moment. Yes, sometimes, yeah, providing whatever they needed. And so with that, I just wanna say thank you, too, for putting our students first, loving them first, and making them feel special in those families. So each year, the staff has also been excited to receive Dairy Queen, a Blizzard. And it was always just enjoy it from somebody special. And so I think I'm right on this, but I think it's the generosity of Dr. Henry that we have these blizzards that are delivered, and we really appreciate that, too. So I know you wanted to keep that hidden, but I think it's really special that you thought of us, and I loved it. And you can keep sending those our way, too. They're great. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, there you go. So also, we believe that this was provided by her, and that's just one of the many things that she does behind the scenes that she really doesn't want people to know that she does, and I wanted y'all to be aware of that. But also, wanna think about just some of the things that people have said to me, and that is, they're gonna always remember your love, your love for them, your love for our students. Also, your warm welcome and greetings, which I mentioned earlier, your listening ear, taking the time to really listen, a giving heart, and for providing that support and encouragement and words of wisdom in those special moments when they needed to be heard or said. So I asked Dr. Henry on a nice note, you know, just, "What are you gonna do with retirement? Are you sure you wanna do this?" And very quickly, she says, "I have five precious grandchildren." And she hopes to spend many, 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 many trips, and those are in capital letters, by the way, with her sweet husband Jim, who's out here. And that's what we want for you, too. You will always be welcome to come back, spend time with us. We love you for everything you've done. We thank you. And again, just like with Chris, we're better because you've touched our lives. Thank you. Now, I will introduce Dr. Greg English. He's gonna come up and celebrate with some people retired.
We have one retiree this year at Tullahoma High School, and it was kinda, kinda late to the game in doing so. We're gonna misrela, I'm honored to get to speak about her tonight. Mr. Quick is, he's busy finding my replacement. But, but I'm glad that I get to be, be the one to talk about Marcy. I've known Marcy, of course, as a colleague and also as a band mom. We go way back and truly appreciate all that she's done for all of us. Marcy has been an undeniable presence at Tullahoma High School since 2008, mostly. If you, if you know Marcy, ignoring her is not an option. She actually taught, taught here in 2000, 2001? Is that right? Okay. Before leaving for a while, Marcy has served our THS family as a math teacher, a substitute teacher, our attendance guru, and far too many times as gatekeeper. She has been invaluable to me as administrator and is loved by all at THS. When I asked the faculty earlier today if they had any comments they wanted me to share tonight, my inbox was flooded within a couple of hours. The first thing is just the beginning of the sentences. It was a play from the Scott Hargrove book. "Marcy Ledbetter is meticulous, fantastic, helpful, forgiving, kind, generous, cheerful, detail-oriented, dedicated, hardworking, a great listener, loyal, funny, patient, accommodating, and friendly." Amy Sisk says, "Marcy has kept THS on point in the attendance department, and she will always cherish their conversations about flu percentages." Shawn Martin appreciates Marcy for her sense of humor and allowing him to call her "marsmello." Julie Kemp wrote, "Marcy always maintained a cheerful and professional representation of our school as the first point of contact for visitors entering the school. She patiently endured requests for attendance changes and was always ready to assist with anything asked of her." Mandy Moore shared, "Marcy Ledbetter is the epitome of what every Tullahoma City Schools employee should be. On a daily basis, she exemplifies grace under fire with a very demanding and essential job that she performs. She has never failed to respond with anything other than a cheerful 'Of course, no problem' to my request over the years that she fixes a mistake that I have made on the daily absentee. And then there is that smile of hers. So sweet and charming, an absolute lovely person, absolutely lovely person. It saddens me so much to know she is leaving us, but it is time for her to enjoy the rewards of her many years of service to the staff of THS. She will be..." She will be missed. Cindy Rusk says, it has been an honor to have worked with Marcy for the last 13 years at THS. Marcy is a loyal worker and friend, a loyal coworker and friend, and will be greatly missed. Best wishes for her happy retirement, and thank you for everything. Finally, Cameron Phelps. I will miss having my other half here with me. Over the past six years, she has become my best friend, not only my coworker. Our families have even become close, and no, we always will always stay that way. We have always had an inside joke word, so I think it's ridiculous, ridiculous, that she is leaving me. Yeah, it will open up time for her to babysit for me. So, Marcy, we wish you a long and happy retirement. Thank you so much for all you've done for THS and all of us in THS. And to Angela.
It's not very bright down here. I hope I can read. I have one retiree tonight, and I tried to make it short and sweet, but it's an entire page, so just bear with me. And then she's going to speak afterwards. She told me she's got a big speech prepared. I'm just kidding. Okay, Tullahoma High School, 1988. That's where Cindy started with Tullahoma City Schools. This was back in the day when cafeteria workers wore all white, and Charlotte Phelps sat at her desk, smoking cigarettes all day long while the workers made the best Easter rolls in 12 counties, all from scratch. Back when Ms. Charlotte checked everyone's ankles each morning to make sure they were wearing knee-high pantyhose. From the beginning of my career, I've heard this story from her many times, and I just had to share it. Cindy never wanted to wear pantyhose. That was not something that she was comfortable with. So, each morning, Ms. Charlotte would check her ankle to see that she was wearing socks, and it would drive her crazy, but Cindy's work ethic kept her alive and well at Tullahoma City Schools. She later transferred over to Jack T. Fera in the 90s and then was promoted to a manager in 1997. Gail Holland was principal, and when she was transferred to Robert E. Lee, she specifically requested that Cindy come with her to Robert E. Lee. My predecessor did not want to break up the gang and loved that Gail wanted her to go with her, so Cindy made the trek over to Robert E. Lee and became a Lion. She's continued her career with us at Robert E. Lee since then. She has been a manager for 24 years, and we are, there's no way that we are ever going to be able to replace her and her wit and her charm and her charisma. It's just, it's irreplaceable. She's dedicated over half her life to feeding the kids in Tullahoma. Tens of thousands of kids have been impacted by her presence, and to this day, she said she still runs into former frogs and lions, and they look at her and say, hey, weren't you my lunch lady? And it just makes her boast with pride that they recognize her and that she made that kind of impact. It also makes her wonder how in the world they can be old enough to be adults and out in the real world when she helped raise them. She's been a smiling face every day, a warm welcome, and a sincere invite to always come back and see me tomorrow. She's impacted so many children, including my own children. My Charlie is not really accepting that Ms. Cindy's not going to be there next year, so I'm having to coach her to kind of deal with that and trust that it's going to be okay, that she's not going to be there. And I know so many of the Lions are going to have a big adjustment next year with her not being there as well. I'm sure that the Robert E. Lee faculty are absolutely going to miss her, and I know that they adore her, but I know for a fact that the nutrition staff and our department are most definitely going to miss her. It will be quite a transition for us to not have her with us next year. Her final year was full of uncertainty, fear, and change, but with all the chaos of the pandemic, we were able to reach more children than we ever have before, increase our community outreach, and I watched her develop relationships with these families on her weekly pickups that we've never had the opportunity to do. We've also been able to feed her Lions for free this year, and she's been able to touch and feed and see more kids every day than she ever has before. We wish you all the best in your next chapter in life. I want you to float in your pool, wear your sunscreen, take all the cruises, spend time with your family and your mom, and take care of that grandbaby when she gets here. Don't get suckered into too much. We wish you all the luck in the world, and we're going to miss you.
Okay. I know.
Come on up here, Rod. You're lucky I ain't got no lawn piece of paper. Rod started in Tullahoma City Schools as general maintenance. And from there, we kind of worked him into heating and air conditioning. We got him certified in that. But then we had an opening in the wood shop. And that's where he took off. That was his passion. And from there, you can't walk in one of our schools without finding some of his work. I mean, even in the administration building here. It was a real pleasure working with you, Rod. And I hope you enjoy your retirement and stay healthy, and come and see us every now and then, every now and then. Yeah. I'd ask him, he said, you know, you build something for this one, and then another one would see it, and then all of a sudden, you got a whole wing, you know, and then they're wanting this, and they're wanting that. And I always ask him, I said, would you give them everything they need? He said, well, I give them everything. How you put that? I don't always give them everything they want, but I definitely give them what they need. But it's a pleasure working with you. I consider you a great friend, and enjoy your retirement.
And now it's my turn, so Diane Darlington, come on forward. Here she comes. Well, of course, with her flashy shoes, it's a must. One of the first staff interactions I had when I came to Tullahoma City Schools was with Diane Darlington. She made me feel so welcomed right from the start. I quickly learned that Diane was much more than the Director of Technology for the district. She embodied a love for this district, its staff and students. And while she was very knowledgeable in all aspects of technology, she had a special gift for relationships and relating to all. There was not a need that I had that Diane did not anticipate and readily take care of. It's no surprise to me that her technology team was under great leadership. A very sad communication I had with Diane was when she called me before I even arrived to let me know this decision had been made and was coming. And I remember trying to convince her to at least stay with me one year. Do you remember that? She did not. She did not even listen to me at all. She just kept telling me it would be okay and I would be fine. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I remember that. I have to also say, upon her retirement in the fall, the seamless transition to a new director made her exemplary leadership quite evident once again. Just so you all know, Diane started with Tullahoma City Schools in 1999 as an educational assistant at Bel Air. She moved to technology in 2001 as a computer tech and was named Director of Technology in 2014. She served Tullahoma City Schools with a smile, a great attitude, and a knowledge of technology that made all of our lives easier. She never missed a beat in taking care of all of us in Tullahoma City Schools, and I hear the same thing is true in retirement. She is enjoying travel and time with her precious family. Diane, thank you for all you have done for me, but most importantly, for the students and team members that you've given over your years in service to Tullahoma City Schools. Congratulations to you. And Debbie Edens, coming forward, saving the best for last. Jack T. Fera Elementary Principal Debbie Edens is retiring after 32 years in education. Mrs. Edens has been in Tullahoma City for 18 of those years, serving as principal at both East Middle School and at Fera Elementary School. It was clear to me from the first time that I met Debbie that she had a strong love for children and that student-centered leadership was absolutely her focus. I enjoyed watching her engage with teachers and staff as she navigated this very unique year and continued to find ways to be inventive with ideas that would enable students to have fantastic experiences under her care and leadership. You all may not realize that Mrs. Edens was the creator of this year's Veterans Day Reverse Parade, which went from just her school welcoming veterans in a car parade to the entire school district, and it was an amazing success. Her heart for veterans and for recognizing those incredible individuals was powerful in that moment and in this unique year. She didn't stop to not, she did not stop or hesitate to figure out how to resolve and still recognize them in a creative way. During our time together over the last year, I saw a leader that cares deeply about her students and staff and thrives on watching them progress and succeed. I have to say that Mrs. Edens has been incredibly encouraging and welcoming to me this year, and I greatly appreciated her for that. She always seemed to know the right thing I needed to hear at the right time. I have enjoyed all of our conversations, Debbie. It truly was an honor to work with you over this last year, and I wish you the very best in retirement. Wow, and that sums up 286 years of incredible service to students and families.
I just said I don't want to start a trend because I think most of you want to go home, but I do want to say something really quick. And that's that when I was liaison, I think two or three times, so Mr. Hargrove's been principal at East Lincoln, attending his attend dance on Friday morning, I've got to meet Ms. Wilcox. And she really impressed me the first time I met her because at some point, she told me that teaching is my vocation, but East Lincoln is my passion. And it really hit me between the eyes because I had to reassess myself, how passionate am I about my job? And I think that the years of service that these retirees have provided us shows that they also are passionate, and not just our system and not just our school board, but the whole community. Every citizen owes y'all a great debt of gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you all. And as much as I know that you probably want to stay for the rest of the meeting, it looks as if you all are planning some sort of, it looks like you all are planning some sort of meeting or filling out some sub forms or something like that.
Yeah, sub forms are in the bag.
Yeah, sub forms are right out there. So, thank you all so much. We wish you the very, very best.
Happy retirement to you.
Thank you so much. It's great. It looks like they're already starting. I think they are starting, and they have not invited us.
Not her thing about it.
Okay, staff celebrations, Dr. Stevens.
Well, I hope Coach Rich Chadwick is here, and I cannot see.
He's back there.
Ah, there he is. Come on down, sir, come on down. On September 28th of this last school year, Coach Richie Chadwick, who's going to make his way very quickly, hugging all those retirees. Coach Chadwick, now you know, saying congratulations to those folks is what you need to be doing. I love it. Come on up here. On September 28th of last year, Coach Richie Chadwick hit a very impressive milestone in his coaching career. He recorded his 400th career victory. 400th career victory. Coach Chadwick began his coaching career in 1997 as both the boys' and girls' soccer coach. He took a few years off while his own boys were small to coach only the boys' soccer team, but is now back at it, coaching both the boys' and girls' soccer teams. No doubt why it has been so very hard to get him to a board meeting to celebrate him. Coach Chadwick, congratulations to you on this most impressive milestone. And school board member Amy Dotson has a presentation for you.
Richie has not only done such an amazing job for our school system, but for my family personally, we have been involved with Richie now for nine years through travel soccer. And he does, it's so much more than what he does on the field with the players. He's teaching these young players from when they are seven years old, when my first one started with him, how to become men. And then it's more about what you do on the field and off the field, and how many points you score and how many wins and losses you do. And even when they have mess ups, you'll always hear from Richie saying, hey, you did a great job. Next time, what do you think about trying this? He's always got positive feedback to give them. And that as a parent, as a teacher, as a board member, is what I feel like all of our coaches should be. So, I want to personally thank you for being an amazing coach and leader for our young women and women.
Wonderful. We're going to get a picture with Ms. Dotson. And next, coordinated school health. Yes, this year has been unprecedented. And before this next speaker comes forward, I want to publicly recognize and thank Gina Bumbalo, our Coordinated School Health Director, for the stellar work she did this year leading and navigating COVID-19. Her work with the seven nurses allowed for our students, staff, and families to be well-served during this difficult year. While she has supervised nurses, she has also continued to manage all elements of coordinated school health and done so exceedingly well. Each year, Mrs. Bumbalo shares an annual report with you all and the community. I would like to welcome her forward and for all of us to give her a round of applause for all she's done this year as we move down to the auditorium so we can see this presentation clearly.
This is my seventh year in coordinated school health and my 24th year at Tullahoma City Schools. So, it was kind of nice to see the people coming and going, and I was like, wow, some of these people, you know, that were here when I got here, it's like they're leaving. What does that mean? Am I away? But no, I'm sticking around. Courtney's School Health has lots of different components, and I'm not going to read those up there to you, but take a wild guess at what took the majority of my time this year? COVID, which fits into almost all of those categories when you're looking through them. So, let's see. So, COVID took a large chunk of my time, and there was, especially back when we started in June and July, there were daily changes. And I don't mean that in any other than truthful. Dr. Stevens would constantly say, okay, what is it at this afternoon? And so we would look and see, and those guidelines and recommendations came from many different people. The CDC, the Tennessee Department of Health, Tennessee Department of Education, local health providers, the EMS, there were a lot of people that were involved in helping guide us through COVID-19. We collaborated with people in the community as well as city governments, as well as health officials. And I don't know about you, but there was, every day bombarded with lots of information, some of it factual, some of it not, and deciphering through what do we need to know was sometimes challenging. But together, we made procedures and best practices, and we were a team effort. Tim was here, and I wish he was still here because I would say, thank you, thank you for all he did, thank you for the teachers doing temperature checks, thank you for the principals, there wasn't anybody that I wouldn't say played a part in us having a good, safe learning environment for our community. How did we educate people? We did a lot of different things. We had posters, we had videos, we had handouts, we had all calls, I mean, you name it, in whatever media we had, we were trying to get a good education out there for people to know, what do you need to know? Parents, it was very scary for them, they didn't know what to do, and they were looking at us for guidance, and so I appreciate all those who helped give that guidance. We did a lot of data collection. I still do a lot of data collection, and we all know that data guides are actions or gives us security in what decisions we make. And I can, when I retire, become a contact tracer for anyone, anywhere, I'm just convinced of that. Thank you also for giving us a nurse in every building. There is not anything you could have done for us better than giving us this gift, because they truly are gifts. If you haven't met already, I just wanted to give you a good look up there. It's, you've got Beth Hill at Robert E. Lee, Angela Campbell at West Middle, you've got Charlie Owens at Farah. They're your, our three newbies, but they've been a trial by fire, they're no longer newbies. Jessica Craig is at East Lincoln, Lori Welch at the high school, Kristen Sisk at Bel Air, and Teresa Jaworski at East Middle School. I don't think you can ask anybody that would say there was a bad decision to hire new nurses and to have one in every school. I haven't found them if there is, so we're very appreciative of that. Nurse visits, I should have put a guess out there and then told you the real thing, but 15,700 recorded visits. That doesn't include in the beginning, when we had to do quarantine and talk to, bring a child up, assess, are they in, you know, do they have symptoms, talk to their parents, and it isn't a quick call to come get your kid, they're quarantined, it's what's going on, why, how long do they have to be? It's a good five-minute conversation. In the beginning, it might be a five-minute conversation followed up with, once it's sunk in, calling them back the next day for a 10-minute conversation. So they, I just sing their praises all the time. There were 225 staff visits that were recorded, so that's a low estimate, who knows how many, but those are ones that we know for sure. 20 visits a day is pretty common for the nurse to see, so that kind of tells you they're busy all day long. It's not just putting a Band-Aid on anybody anymore. Another thing that goes along with nursing is stellar therapy, which is a Medicaid reimbursement. Telehome City Schools has been involved with stellar therapy since 2014 with the therapy with special ed. Now, we have, starting this month, have retained their services to do nursing service. So what happens is they, what the nurses are already doing, we're now getting some revenue from. So it's not anything new that we're doing, we're not doing additional services that we weren't already doing, it's just now that we're getting some reimbursement for it. The things that can be charged is not every visit, it has to be something to do with billable treatments and visits, which is medication administration, diabetic treatment, tube feeding, catheterizations, asthmatic care, there are some other things, but that's the basic umbrella to which you can charge for. Currently, we have 18 students, estimated revenue for the six weeks is $1,600. So that's money that we wouldn't have gotten had we not retained these services, so there wasn't a reason not to. An average visit is $13 reimbursed from Medicaid, and we receive 70% of that currently. As the years go on, they will, we will get a greater percentage based on our, what the cost is. In a regular school year, we have around 40 students, and you can do the math to see that that is a sizable amount of revenue that you wouldn't want to leave on the table. What are you going to do with the revenue? Well, we're going to get equipment we need, deal with personnel, consumables, professional development, it's an endless list of what we could provide and improve the care for our students and staff. Usually, I spend a lot of time telling you about our health screenings, but because of COVID, we did not do anything but hearing and vision this year. We did not have any volunteers, only our seven nurses and a few of the school personnel at that school were involved in it. We had 1,530 students screened, and that includes regular, pre-K, RTI, sped, that's everybody. Referrals, we had 232 that were referred because of vision, and we, VSP is a program that we receive free vouchers for people who don't have insurance can get the exam and the glasses, and we had 10 of those that we gave out this year. Hearing, we only had 15 referrals, so that's this year's screening. We completed everything by September, so that was, was good. I wasn't sure we could do it with the COVID restrictions, but we did, and we weren't able to screen the virtual students, but anybody that wanted to come in that was virtual, we, nurses were willing to stay and do them individually. Next year, we have new screening guidelines, and I am working, the state is sending me a video, and I'm working with the nurses, but we're also going to incorporate to have more of a team effort, anybody who needs screening through the year to go through that training, so we're all doing it the same way, we're all using the same form, so that should make it easier, should a teacher or somebody need to access the information. The cute little machine with the eyeballs down in the right-hand corner is the Welch Allen Spot Vision Screener, and it's a great thing that will be here soon. I was hoping it would be here for tonight, but it's not here yet, but it's coming. All you have to do is point it at the child and let them look, and it takes their vision screening. They don't have to talk to you, they don't have to touch anything, it's great. When you have people who are shy, and especially kindergartners who, they don't know a teacup from a cell box sometimes, and they're trying to get them to tell what's up there and the distance, so this will be a great advantage to our system, so I'm really excited to get it and to use it, and I will bring it to a board meeting so we can screen all of you as soon as I get it. Now, with screening, since I didn't do the BMI data this year, I don't have that to share for you, but since I didn't get to do my presentation, although I do have it, in case any of you want to see last year's, it was 25% is how many are in the obese category. That's almost a fourth of our students. So I'm not saying that we in general can make a big needle move in that way, but being aware will help us make decisions that will be healthier for our students. Whenever we can get them active, it's really important that we do what we can. Questions on any of this, you feel free to ask me anytime. Sensory boxes, last year, we received a community foundation grant for $5,000, and I gave you off some fidgets, and then I passed the box around, and that box that you had, we gave out 80 boxes. Those were what were passed out. We did an additional 20 boxes, and 50 of the boxes that we did, we went back and replenished things that were needed. What, why do we need fidgets? Well, I don't know about you, but I'm just sitting here, and I could do this while I talk, and it just, you know, it's just what you do. It helps you focus, it helps calm people. This year, during COVID, many students suffered from anxiety. Having something that was theirs that they could hold on to, that they could manipulate, helped them in many ways, so we're appreciative of, of the grant, and now we have used all the funds for it, but I have secured some funds for next year to replenish again, so we'll, we'll keep using them over and over again. This year, the community foundation, I wrote with, making art kits, and we had $6,000 that we received, and we did 225 art kits for virtual students. They included markers, crayons, sketchbooks, color pencils, glue, sharpeners, you name it, we had it in there. Virtual students came and went at different times, some picked up packets, some didn't, so sometimes they were not distributed all together, they came in different times. I love looking at the artwork, and they had probably that many more, and it was hard to pick and choose what I shared with you, but here's some of the things that the virtual students completed, and then up at the top, you have all the art teachers there helping me assemble these packets and kits together. So we, the high school got clay, and so that's down in the bottom corner is one of the clay items that they made. I don't know what that is, but I don't want to even say, it's a monster of some kind, maybe, but, and the hippo was one of my favorites, I couldn't not have the hippo on there. But I appreciate all the art teachers that helped assemble. Just yesterday, Dr. Stevens and I went over to Manchester, and we received a check for $2,000 from the Sportsman Business and Charitable Organization, and they gave us $2,000 last year, so this is last year's funds for this year, and then we have $2,000 for next year as well. The Lions Locker gave us $6,000 this year. Each school received $850 to spend on what their school needed for their students, and we're very much appreciative to Rita and Russ Barrett and to Kathy Clark and the Downtown Lions Club for providing those funds for us. They will continue that as, next year as well, I don't know how much, but she thought that it would be the same amount at least. So the schools back there, the principals, everybody looked forward to next year and having some more funds to spend. Total grant funding for this year was $14,000. I was really happy to work with Mary Gilbert with the Trauma Informed School Grant that Robert E. Lee received, so we're real excited about that. In-kind funding, in-kind funding is where you don't get actual dollars, but you get services or you get items delivered to you. The UT Extension Service, they had $2,000 in nutrition items, and we're going to do cooking classes for the middle schools next year after school, so that's what we plan to do with those items, and the UT Extension person is going to come and teach one of the schools, and then I'm working with Angela with nutrition to teach the other, so we're, we're looking forward to it. American Heart Association and U.S. Games, we had a total of $6,937 with them. Here's just, I'm not reading for you because you all can read up the screen up there, but we are so blessed that so many people contribute so much to us. Just a quick update, Bright Smiles for Our Futures, because when you brush, things go everywhere, and aerosol, and COVID, so we did not do that this year, but we did give out some toothbrushes to send home so that they could use, especially explain that if you're sick, use this, throw it away and, and get a new toothbrush. Fuel Up to Play 60, they provided flag football kits for each of the schools, and then Checkpoints Driving Program, which we had done in years, last year for the first year, where new drivers came with their parents and made a contract and understood the rules and the graduated license. We didn't do that this year because of in-person and training, but we hope to resume that next year. You'll notice down here that we had $85,256 in in-kind provided through coordinate, with coordinated school health. That does include what's, and other people have donated, but that's indirectly with what we do in coordinated school health. We had 60 community partners that helped achieve that, so we're very blessed. Immunizations, this year, Coffee County Health Department did our student flu clinics, and you can see the numbers, we had a total of 95 students that participated and the schools that participated. Then for our staff vaccine clinics, Walgreens came as normal, and we scheduled time, and you can see the numbers up there. And then in February and then in April, we did our COVID vaccine clinic. That was no small undertaking, but I'm happy to say that I feel like we have about half of our staff now vaccinated either through this or out on their own. And when you see that at least one dose, don't think, oh, 45 people didn't get the second dose. I wanted to explain that, for example, Mr. English had already gotten his first dose, so he got his second dose with us. He didn't need a third, so you know, he's one of those one people. And there were a couple who chose not to, but for the majority, those people got their second dose, just not with us. And then 17 non-staff members received, 10 of them received one dose and seven received both doses, so I'm, I feel good about that. Tomorrow, the Coffee County Health Department will hold their COVID vaccine clinic for 12 and up. It's going to be a drive-by in the front of the school, we're very appreciative to Mr. Quick for letting us use the property in sight, and so we will, as soon as I have numbers of that, I'll, I'll send that to you. And there's some pictures of the Health Department doing our COVID clinic, and we appreciate the work that they do. Flexible seating, this is where I'm going to end today, is that with Mr. Moore on the new FitBikes desk that we have, and I sent several pictures of those, two of the teachers sent me, I said, what difference did it make in your class? They said it made night and day difference, that kids that are wanting to misbehave or to not focus, they get on that and they're, they expend energy and they enjoyed it, and it made learning fun. So anytime you can make learning fun, you've done a good thing. Wobble cushions and the balance board, the little yellow down there, I can't do that without something to hold on to, but there are people who can do that without holding on. It is, it's a lot of fun, actually, so I enjoy it. Over on to the right, you have Allison from East Middle, who's using one of the ergonomic, she can take and put her feet behind there so that she's more on her knees, or she can rest her back, so I have three of those that have been given out, and everybody's like, I wish I had had this earlier, that they really were, they're called ergonomic knee seats, so, who knew? And then the bowel chairs up at the top, we use those in the elementary school, we gave some of those out. It was a little bit harder to use balance balls because of the spacing and keeping your six feet, but we did incorporate those into some of the programs. All right. Last, thank you for your support, leadership, and dedication during this past year. Corny School Health will not be able to accomplish this much without the amazing nurses, teachers, maintenance department, staff, leadership team, and Dr. Stevens, who willingly went beyond to serve our families. I didn't mean to get emotional, it's just I really appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Gina, I just wanted to say, I know why you got emotional. You take your job very seriously, you dedicate a tremendous amount of time, and I know, I mean, I'm going to get emotional thinking about it, that it's been a very hard year for you, and, and I've asked you, I have, I don't know, maybe all of us have, I have had many conversations with you about things, I've sent emails, you, you always respond, you're always professional and pleasant, and even if, if you've already been going at it 14 hours, and we appreciate you so very much, and we really look forward to having a year where the focus isn't COVID. And we hope you have a wonderful summer full of rest and peace.
Well, this whole day I haven't worn a mask, and I feel like, you know, I've done something wrong, so we were talking earlier, and it's like, I realized I haven't put it on all day long, so it's a little bit of excitement for what the new year will bring next year.
Yes, and I think that we felt that way too, because some of us were at the luncheon, and I have, it's the first day that I haven't worn my mask. I actually wore it to the store, but I didn't wear it there, and I haven't worn it here, and I feel naked. I mean, it's a cra, it's a crazy feeling, it's like I'm doing something wrong or whatever, but you're so, so appreciated, thank you so much, and I know you have a wonderful team, and you always lift them up, and we appreciate, I appreciate all of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Wow, y'all are fast. A motion by Sid Hill, a second by Pat Welch, all in favor, is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, Mrs. Vaughn? Great, thank you so much. On to unfinished business. 2021, 2022 budget, Mr. Ray?
Thank you. I'm sure if I was to hold this or not, but anyway. I provided in your packet a draft copy of the FY22 proposed budget for your review. We wanted you to have this draft copy so that you would have time to review and prepare for the June study session. As a reminder, the June board meeting is when action on the budget is scheduled, and so the June study session will give us opportunity. And so the June study session will give us opportunity to discuss and review and answer any questions that you might have. Please reach out to me in the meantime or any other members of the Finance Committee with questions on anything related to this budget draft that you have there for your review. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ray. And now we are ready for the audit results.
Thank you. As annually required, TCS submits to an independent outside financial audit. As a municipal school system, the results of our audit are included as part of the city's annual audit. For FY20, so that would be dates July 1 of 2019 through June 30 of 2020, the city contracted with Householder Artman, P L L C, to perform the audit of all city entities, including TCS. The results of this audit are provided for your review as well as the management letter. I'm proud to inform you that there were no findings reported by Householder Artman. The management letter did provide suggestions for potential areas of improvement and we appreciate this information as it helps us strengthen our processes. The TCS Accounting Department will continue to explore ways to become more efficient and improve our practices. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the accounting staff and all members of the Finance Department for their diligent work and careful attention to the accounting standards, guidance from the state and to suggestions made by Householder Artman. It is my pleasure to be part of a fantastic team. And I entertain any question that you might have about the annual audit.
No questions, but a comment, just how much we all appreciate the excellent work you all do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion to accept the 2019, 2020 audit results as presented?
Same.
Motion by Jessica Fogarty. Is there a second? Second by Teresa Lawson. Is there any discussion? All board members in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, Mrs. Vaughn? Great, thank you so much. Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Building and grounds, Pat Welsh, please.
We've got a little bit of a link in the report. We'll see if we can get through it quickly. The committee met, sorry. We are now. The committee met May the 5th and that was following, followed a meeting of, with Dr. Stevens and Mr. Ray that they had with the City Administrator, Ms. Moody and Finance Director, Ms. Wilson. And the, the, the meeting, of course, then was to try to determine what our ability to draw funds off of the sales tax sinking fund. We've got, we've got a definite number of what we were able to access now. But there's a large bond being paid off in 2016 that they're going to have to have a follow-up meeting, or the city is, with their own financial advisors to determine what our amounts that's going to be available at that time. We need to get those numbers, both those numbers and where the committee then will have an idea exactly what could be borrowed and at what time. And then we'll begin to really prioritize the report that we had from Orkot Winslow. But I think we can safely say that the committee endorses large projects at FARA and then, and also here, and then the other three schools that are, the older ones will all have work. More recent work, there's a fence that's at THS. There's a fence that screens the Jackson Street businesses and the gym parking lot that is not very good repair. That area is going to be cleaned and Mr. Ray's getting estimates now on a new chain link fence that would also have some screening. Gym floor at THS and also at West will be re-screened on July 5th. Also, new LED lights at THS Gym have been ordered. The grate for the draining of the radius on the track at the stadium that's closest to the school, we've talked about often, that grate is ordered and work is, will begin on June, around June 1st. The tennis court area that we've already talked about, previous meetings, the survey work was done in the first week of May. In Bel Air, a new dumpster pad that the committee's talked about several times will be poured around June 1st. At East Middle, there's a lot of work to be done. You may have seen in the paper that the softball bleachers are beginning to get bids. And that, those will add seats that are sorely needed at the softball field and also become ADA compliant. The fence on the dugout side of the soccer field is being replaced in this year's budget. And also at East Middle and also at East Lincoln, they're due to be on the resealing schedule. And bids are being taken this week to replace carpet areas at East. And that is sorely needed if anybody hadn't been by there recently. East Lincoln, there's going to be some efforts to clean up the Warren Street area near the walking path. And that is a quick review and I will gladly take any questions or comments.
I have a question. You said there was a payoff in 2016?
Correct. I'm sorry, 2026.
Okay, 2026, that's what I thought, that's good.
Thanks for the correction.
Great, thank you. Is it anyone else?
That's five years away. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Ray's had, pretty well captured. Thank you.
Great, excellent report. Thank you. Moving to new business, virtual school, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, as you all know, we're stepping into virtual learning options at the high school level. Currently, under State Board rules and regulations, there are two types of virtual options, virtual program and virtual school. As we desire to personalize learning for our high school students, we plan to offer both virtual program and virtual school. Essentially, if a student has a significant number of virtual courses, he or she must be enrolled in a virtual school that has its own unique ID number, which is Toluoma Virtual Academy. Students who do not have a significant number of virtual courses will participate in the virtual program and will remain enrolled in Toluoma High School. To make sure we can meet the individual needs of students, we recognize that applying for a virtual school is essential. There is a multi-page application that must be submitted to the state by June 1. A component of this application is ensuring board approval of this pursuit to pursue a virtual school with its own unique school number. If the board approves this evening, we plan to submit the application tomorrow morning. Before we get to the recommended motion for this though, I would like to invite Dr. English forward to share a brief overview of the options that will be available to our high school students who are interested in pursuing and meet the qualifications and criteria for the virtual learning in the 21, 22 school year. Dr. English?
I hate to interrupt, but does everyone have in their packet the handouts? It's attached, it's attached. So if you want to, it's already, it's just attached. I'm sorry. Yes, I didn't go on down because I had already seen them. But yes, you want to see that because that will be helpful as he's explaining also.
Right. So, so you've got those documents. Those are from a parent meeting we had last week, parent roundtable. We had some, some parents that actually requested that. I wish it were my idea, but they, they asked for it and it was a great idea. We met with seven parents in person and about 15 joined via Zoom, which I thought was appropriate for, for a virtual school.
And we had some students present as well.
We had some students attend as well and they all had, they had very good questions. You've got the FAQ also, just, those are the general questions that we've been fielding about the academy. Of course, most of the questions, they kind of revolve around those options. The options, they have evolved a bit as we first identified. We knew from the beginning that we wanted to be able to offer our students incredible flexibility. You know, the benefit of asynchronous classes is flexibility. Students, they don't have to log in at 8:15 to attend first period. They don't have to log in at 9:50 to attend second period. They do have to log in, they do have to do their work, but it's on their own, it's on their own schedule. As long as they're doing it and completing the, completing the coursework, submitting their assignments, that's, that's what's most important. And so that creates a, a great amount of flexibility for, for those students, which is the goal. The, the options, of course, are full-time virtual. A student that, that doesn't desire to do any in-person classes, they can apply to be a full-time virtual student. All of their courses will be asynchronous virtually. We, we recognize that some courses don't translate well to virtual. Band, choir, CTE courses, well, hands-on CTE courses. We, we feel like we can probably do a great job with computer programming, with coding. We feel like we can probably do a great job if we can figure out some FERPA barriers with digital arts. But still, we wanted to give the option of students coming to campus for those, those courses that just don't work well. And we don't want to define what those courses are. That might be foreign language. It might be algebra. We want the students to be able to decide what courses work well for them virtually and what don't. Which don't, what don't. We wanted to, we want them to kind of be able to customize their experience. Lastly, we want them to have the option of using the Virtual Academy to get ahead. That's the, the, what has become known as the plus-one option. If students have a full virtual or in-person schedule, they can apply to, to participate in plus-one. That is going to either get them ahead in credits so they can graduate early or free up their schedule so that they can, they can explore more electives at Toluoma High School. I like to use the four-year band student example. If you're a four-year band student, your electives are spoken for. You don't, you don't have any free room in your schedule. This allows that student to maybe take one of their core classes virtually, freeing them up to explore CAD, freeing them up to explore welding or machining or, or one of our great CTE hands-on courses. Okay? So, so those are the, those are the three pathways. Any questions about those?
Can you explain what, what is flex THS?
Flex is that, that second one. That's where they can kind of customize their experience. They can take a mixture of both. The thing with, well, no, plus-one is in addition to a full schedule. Flex is, I'm going to take English and math virtually. I'm going to take band and science in person. And it can, there can be a lot of combinations there. What we realized at first, we were kind of thinking flex would be kind of a, a three-in-one. So I might take three virtually and one in person. And then we realized it doesn't have to be that way. In fact, there's a lot of variations of what it can be. The thing with flex is knowing, if it's important to the student that they, that they remain a THS student, then the majority of their classes have to be in-person at THS. So, but they, you know, majority on a block schedule will be three. So you can take two in-person classes at Toluoma High School and two virtual classes through TVA and remain enrolled at THS. If you choose to be a TVA student, we can enroll you at TVA with two classes TVA and two at THS. I think the majority of students would choose to keep their enrollment at THS. If you go over that, if you take three virtual and one in person, you have to be a TVA student. You have to be enrolled under our, our school number.
And that's a, that's an important distinction for sports, correct?
Exactly. For sports currently, and I know we're, we're kind of working on this. Currently, TWSSAA policy is that if you, you change address, I'm sorry. If you change school but not address, you're ineligible for a year. Even if you are eligible, you can only co-op with one high school in your district. For us, that's, that's no problem. That's easy. We can, we can do that because we only have the one high school. The problem for TWSSAA is systems where there's multiple high schools and, and resolving the changing school but not address issue without creating another issue of loading up one school with all the athletes.
But I think that to, to look at the, the option to organize is that you are really capitalizing on the flexibility. So I think that even if that is, if that is something that we aren't able to overcome with, with kind of other, you know, pushes legislatively or whatever that would look like, the reality is I think you've overcome so many issues by offering an unbelievable amount of flexibility.
That's our hope. Our, our hope is that student athletes will either take, take advantage of plus-one or flex to, to round out what they want to get out of their education. Yes, ma'am?
Just from any sort of a band geek or even a sport geek scenario, when you had this meeting with the students who participated in the 15 virtuals and all that, was there any feel, I don't even know if I've got that, but like, were a majority of bands too interested? Sports people interested or was it just across the board?
It's, it's a, it's a pretty even split right now. I can tell you that the majority of the applications are for full-time virtual. We, we have a handful of flex. We have a handful of plus-one, but the majority of students wanting to take advantage are wanting to do, to do this full-time.
Do you anticipate?
I, I know, but it's, it's an even split. Right, right. I haven't, I haven't noticed it really falling any one specific way.
Okay, I just definitely see the advantage. In fact, I was going to say, yeah, it's quite different.
Oh, yeah.
Because of how limiting it was.
Yes, yeah. The excitement for me is, is finding all the ways this is going to kind of, for lack of a better term, blow up the school. You know, tear down the walls of the school so students can, I mean, they can really, they really can customize their, their education.
And so I would say to that point, Greg, you should probably be really prepared for a crazy amount of growth. I mean, in the sense of, I know I couldn't get on that virtual meeting just because of time constraints, but I think that as this grows in knowledge throughout the community, I think that you guys will particularly have to be crazy prepared because, you know, like you said, if, if right now the abundance is someone who is a virtual student, well, that's a kind of a no-brainer, right? But as this kind of, as the information kind of disseminates, you know, through and people realize the flexibility, I think it's going to be off the charts. So I think you should prepare for that explosion.
To date, we have 20 applications, which I'm, I'm a little surprised by. We, we decided to cap it this year at only 50 students to start small and do it, do it well. We put out a little social media blast today and I've got a few more emails requesting an application. We, we're supposed to shut those down on the 21st. I'm not opposed to extending it, except for we need to know who our clientele is going to be and what classes they need so we can start looking for teachers to teach, to build and teach those classes. So I don't, I don't look to extend that too much beyond the 21st. And like I said, after, after the blast today, we're getting a little bit more interest. And, and I think, I think the, we can continue to add specific students after that, depending on what their, their needs are. If, if their needs fit the, the courses we've already decided to offer, we'll be okay.
Can you, one more question. Can you explain a little bit how this will work or maybe not, I'm not sure. With our students that are participating in the MOLO classes as well, can they do that if they're, does that fall under one of these categories?
As far as like TWSSAA restrictions or just? No, in fact. Dual enrollment will, will stay intact. In fact, we hope that this will boost. We, so the, the next part, the next really exciting part of this is, of course, you, you, you know that we were notified yesterday that we were chosen for one of the innovative high school grants. That's 750. Part of that, so the, the Virtual Academy is the centerpiece of that. The, the grant process was, was kind of a whirlwind. I basically had two weeks. Week one was me just getting my head around writing a grant because I'd never written one before. And, and part of the grant process was, well, you got to have partners. I don't need partners, I need a school. And so I reached out to Dr. Hill and, and he helped me really get the ball rolling. I said, you know, I said, I don't know exactly what we need from partners. I said, I know that we are providing students with an extreme amount of flexibility and what we need for them is opportunities. And, and so Dr. Hill set up a, a giant Zoom meeting with, with a whole slew of MOLO folks, a whole slew of really excited MOLO folks. We talked about the possibilities there, expanding dual enrollment, the fact that students are going to be eligible or able to, to take more classes, talking about some internships through them, apprenticeships through them, training our teachers for virtual learning. Also spoke with Winston and Jennifer at the city. They're excited about creating an internship program similar to what Rutherford County has going. We, we have titled this, the Toluoma. We have titled this the Tullahoma Career Pathways Initiative. We're also partnering with TCAT on this. The Virtual Academy is going to create, not only the flexibility, but in many cases, the platform for this partnership to operate.
I'm excited. But I think, like she said, I think once information is more, it's widely spread and where people are finally being able to absorb it, because I mean, I've been hearing about this, and I've been listening about it and researching Virtual Academies, but it's still so much to take in because it's completely outside of the box. So I think once people understand exactly what all that's going to entail, like Jessica said...
I do, too.
I think people are going to be watching very closely and carefully. They had an experience in March of 2020 through May, and then they had this year's experience. And now we are talking about a very different virtual experience. So I think we will have some observers. They hear the right things, but I think they want to see how does this unfold. And that's one of the reasons we wanted to start small. We really want to get this right and excel, and have it be a highlight or a star across the state as an exemplary program.
They'll be under my direction, but those students will remain under the Tullahoma High School school number, yes. Right, and of course, those teachers will be working as adjunct. There are existing teachers, we'll be paying them a stipend to do that. With some of the grant funds, we'll be also paying them a creation fee, as it will, it'll be...
I don't see how you can extend the application deadline very far.
No, we can't extend it very far. We have to know.
We do. And to clarify, on the Flex option, you can either be enrolled at Tullahoma High School, but there are options that you would be enrolled at TVA. Some of the Flex there would be, the majority of your courses are with TVA, but you may take one course at the high school. So Flex has both options, meaning both have a homeschool option, whether it's the high school or a Virtual Academy.
There's visual in your packet with a whole lot of colors to kind of give you an idea of what that could look like, but it's still not all the configurations.
Different combinations. I think that that would be my only encouragement, Greg, and just from a district perspective, is that we need to put at least a little bit more information about those really unique combinations. Because I think typically when people hear "Virtual Academy", their first inclination is to assume that that means it's going to be all virtual, as in from, you know, start to finish. And I think that, I do think you'd capture a lot more. I mean, it's almost like if you crack open that egg, I'm like, oh, be careful, Greg, oh, be careful. I'm not sure if all the applications come rolling in. But if you've already made a really intentional decision to cap it at a certain number, then I think that the big push is to make sure you get that number. And I think you could, if it's just some sort of either a social media campaign or whatever, to really lift up the, all the flexibility that'll be there.
I'm going to do another all-call tomorrow and another email.
And to be honest, our goal really was 30 to start with 50 at the cap.
Lastly, for you, you guys to understand is, part of the grant is to hire three positions for Virtual Academy. That is a lab facilitator, which they'll be mostly supervising, assisting the students that come into our Tullahoma Virtual Cafe, which is part of the facility over there at the Community School Services Building. A career and graduation coach, and a video production studio manager and trainer. Those are three positions that will be funded for three years by the grant. And of course, we hope to be rocking and rolling after three years enough to keep those positions.
One last suggestion, when you're doing an all-call or an email, if you could maybe, like she was saying, okay, type out these are different scenarios that could fall under each category. Because I'm a very visual person, so when I'm hearing it, it's kind of, I'm still getting jumbled in here, but when I see it on paper, oh, this is what that might look like, and this is what this option might look like.
The ultimate message is, it can be whatever you, it can be pretty much whatever you can imagine. The only changing variable in there is where you're enrolled.
Yes, that's right.
And I think as long as you clarify the sports aspect, because I think you do have to get ahead of that. I think that, you know, it'll be off to the...
Yes, and...
It shouldn't be.
Mr. Childress, he and I have been in communication. I have expressed thoughts and ideas around the current structure, and they are meeting June 8th and 9th as a board. He certainly does not know the outcome, but it's very possible that it may be something that we can come back and say it has changed. So that's certainly something being thought about. I know they're aware of this across the state of Tennessee because there are many districts that are stepping into a more permanent virtual offering. So more to come on that. Certainly by the June board meeting, we'll be able to tell you one way or the other.
Do you have any idea, Dr. Stevens, how many districts? Is there any knowledge out there about how many you're actually going to accomplish this, as far as next year goes?
No, I don't really, I don't have a number, but the discussion is a high preponderance of districts, to be honest. Anyone I come in contact is thinking deeply about it. Now, some are not going the school-program route. Some are stepping into it program-only. So that's that one or two. So I would say a great percentage is doing virtual. Where it's different is the districts determining to apply for schools. Yes, yeah.
And we could get that number, I would say.
21 out of 61.
Wow!
A large majority of those 21 were video or virtual students. And there was a good percentage of older districts that we typically traditionally wanted to compete with.
It's also important to know that without Dr. Sherri Zimmerman, that grant would not have been completed and submitted on time. So I want to make sure I give her credit.
It's great. I came to your meeting, it was an excellent meeting. And I think, and I was talking to Dr. Stevens after the meeting, because we were there together misbehaving on the back row. We were referred to as the peanut gallery, I remember that. But I think that one thing that I noticed with the question is people were thinking what COVID virtual looked like. And I think as soon, as soon as, what you two are saying particularly, because your kids are there, as soon as people understand that it's not COVID virtual, which, by the way, our people did a wonderful job of that, wonderful.
They really did.
And, but this is going to provide the flexibility that we heard some of the kids they're talking about, and their families talking about why they need it, or why they feel like it will work for them. And once that's understood, I just believe it's going to blow up. I think having the option, I love all the options that you all have come up with and are giving everyone. And I'm just super excited, I mean, to hear him talk about having a place for the kids to come, and they can meet with people, and that kind of thing. It's just really, really neat. So we appreciate you. It's really good. It's exciting.
Anything else?
All right, so now to bring you back to virtual school. So remember, virtual school is, the majority of our courses are virtual. By rule, we have to apply to the state for a school number. We have done the application, you have seen the application. It was uploaded for you to review. So the administration recommends the school board approve the district moving forward with the virtual school application so that we can have a virtual school, Tullahoma Virtual Academy, for students who are enrolled in a significant number of virtual courses.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. Motion by Sid Hill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica Fogarty. Is there any discussion?
At the moment.
Tennessee, Tullahoma Virtual Academy. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion to approve TVA, please raise your hand? Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn? Excellent, motion passes. Thank you so much. Superintendent's report, Dr. Stevens.
Okay, let me just say this out loud for everyone to take in. We have three days left of this school year. Can you all believe it? It's just amazing. I've really been doing a lot of reflecting over the last couple of weeks. And each day, it hits me more and more what we have accomplished this year. It is astounding to me, astounding. Friday evening, the class of 2021 graduated together, together, with their family and friends in the stadium. It was a beautiful night, albeit a little chilly, to celebrate this incredible class of students. I did not prepare well. It was an absolute honor to shake hands and give hugs to those 234 graduates who were awarded diplomas. Amazing. Now, on to some of our principals wanting to share some celebrations going on at their campuses. Bel Air Elementary Principal Dr. Epley would like to give a special shout-out to PE teacher Dustin Hazlett for organizing an awesome day of PE activities for the Bel Air students. The faculty, staff, and students had a wonderful time during this PE extravaganza. East Middle School Principal Dr. Dilla Hay would like to celebrate reading and math growth at East Middle School this year that exceeded expectations. And this is related to iReady. The median student met 122% of their typical growth target in math and 189% in reading, which you can imagine is, that is really good. 58% of their students, so over half, met their typical growth targets in math, and 68% of them met their growth target in reading. And I would be remiss if I didn't say, we started iReady later in the year. It was a slow start in the midst of all of COVID. And so these results are just really remarkable from my perspective. Teachers and students, as teachers and staff, were celebrated during Teacher Appreciation Week at East Middle. And Dr. Dilla Hay would like to thank our dedicated staff for their tremendous efforts to serve our students during this challenging year. West Middle School Principal Cindy Herrera would also like to share student success in reading and math. West Middle School saw tremendous growth over this school year that exceeded expectations. The median student met 125% of their typical growth target in math and 133% in reading. 57% of their students met both typical growth in both reading and math. It's amazing. West Middle School teacher Tracy Barfield was chosen as Channel 2's Teacher of the Week last week. We encourage you to watch the video on WKRN's website and vote in the coming days so she can be voted the June Educator of the Month. We need your votes. Mrs. Barfield has had many students through the years, and we know our students and families would want to be a part of recognizing one of our Tullahoma City Schools' amazing teachers. Tullahoma is a community that supports our students, staff, and teachers, and what a great opportunity to support teachers by voting for Ms. Barfield. Several West Middle School students made the All-Midstate Band, so let's celebrate Liz French, Haley Brown, Meadow Jones, Tommy Diamond, Connor Chastain, and Elijah Malone. They all qualified for All-Midstate status. Liz French also earned memberships in the All-Midstate Jazz Band. Fantastic. District athletics. We have some very impressive archers in Tullahoma City Schools. This year, the Junior Eagle Group, that's ages eight years and under, placed first in the state and second in the nation. The Eagle Group, nine-to-11-year-olds, placed third in the state. The Youth Group, ages 12 to 14, placed second in the state. And the Young Adult category, ages 15 to 18, placed third in the state. I'm really proud of these students, and I want to thank Coach Josh Harris, Tracy Taylor, owner of Taylor's Archery, and Matt Klingelhott, part-time assistant coach, for their leadership with these young archers. That is most impressive. Our middle schools have had a great spring of competition. Softball, baseball, boys soccer, bowling, golf, and tennis won their season-ending tournaments. We have track and field athletes from both east and west participating in the TMSAA State Small School Track and Field Meet this Saturday. So it continues on. Our high school athletes are down to three individuals actively competing. Petro's Pisano's competed in the regionals yesterday in boys tennis. Both Lily Storey and Logan Crouch will compete at the TWSSAA State Track and Field Meet on May 27th. Our boys tennis team finished runner-up in the district tournament. In an unusual year, we did have more three-sport athletes than we have had in recent years. This year, we have one young lady and 11 young men that are participating in three different sports. A reminder about trauma-informed schools. The Tennessee Department of Education announced that two of our schools have been selected for the second cohort of trauma-informed school. This is a huge announcement for Robert E. Lee Elementary and Tullahoma High School. Selected schools will commit to a two-year development cycle with the department. This will include high-quality training, resources, and ongoing support as these two schools implement trauma-informed strategies. As many of you are already aware, Mr. Travis Moore was named yesterday as the future principal at Jack T. Fair Elementary. I have no doubt that Mr. Moore will provide some great leadership at this school. And today, there was a posting put forth for an assistant principal at East Middle School and another at West. And I can tell you, we've already had a flood of interested candidates to apply. And now I would really like to pause to take a moment and share a word of thanks to each of you, to our parents, family members, students, teachers and staff, and community members for the incredible partnership that made this last school year possible. Not one of us, not one of us in this room out there watching has ever had an experience such as this. So we had nothing to draw from. It has taken all of us banding together and supporting one another to not only finish this school year, but to finish strong. I am proud to say that our students had the opportunity to attend in-person this entire school year. It amazes me that we had that opportunity as I consider all those students in our state and across the country who did not have the opportunity that our students did. I wish all of our students, our teachers, and staff the best for a wonderful, fun, and restful summer. Because, boy, we all need some rest. This next school year, as you can already see, is full of promise and exciting opportunities. I cannot wait to see our students back. I can't believe I'm saying this with three days to go, but I really can't wait to see them back August 2nd for the first day of the 21-22 school year. Chairman Usleton.
Thank you. An excellent, excellent report, as always. We have our city board liaison report with Alderperson, Rupa Blackwell.
So I, can you guys hear me? Okay, so I think what I want to lead with, because it makes sense since we are already talking about retirements, is that we have, on May 7th, Kurt Glick was his last day. He's retired as well from the city. We also just want to give you guys a heads-up. Our fire chief will also be retiring on July 25th. So some major changes will be happening. Also, this is more staffing things. Jennifer Moody will be out on maternity leave. I'm not quite sure exactly when, as we know how that goes. But Sue Wilson will be acting administrator during that time. So anything, I look at you, because we'll go through Sue during that time. Another big thing that I want to let you guys know is that there's no, in the budget that we'll be approving in the next few weeks. There's no proposed tax increase with this year's budget and forecasting 6% property tax increase, of which, as you guys know, and you spoke about, TCS would receive a resulting 6% increase as well in property tax, not sales tax, I'm sorry. Another couple of things I want to let you guys know, for everybody who needs to know this. The pool is opening on Friday, so I know that, you know, last year we had that delayed a little bit. But just for our students, I know that they're going to be excited to get there. So Friday night is the first opening of the pool, and it'll stay open until 9:00 PM. The other thing I was going to say is that there are, we're still trying to get right-of-way at the Evoqua, Evoqua Kings Lane area to finish being able to actually put in those sidewalks there. There have been some improvements already that we're going to be starting on at Evoqua and Riley as well. And then this past week, at the planning commission level, we did put a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen for a new subdivision out by Evoqua Road. So Evoqua, actually off of Lake Tullahoma, so my neighborhood. But, so there is a possibility, and I want to say it was 52 homes there. So that's about all I think that I have for now. Yeah, for now. So, any questions? Yes.
I had somebody ask me the other day, is the indoor pool the problem fixed? Or it's useful now?
I know we approved spending the money to do it, so I don't know if it's... I know we approved spending the money to do it, so I don't know if it's fixed yet, but I can get that update for you, for sure.
It is usable.
It's usable now? Okay, yeah. I know we bought, we bought a heater, so. Also, Mr. English, Dr. English, I just wanted to tell you, I'm going to get with you afterward to get some more information, so I can share it as well, because this is such a, I'm so excited that we're doing this. I think that I would have benefited significantly from it, especially that plus-one program when I was a high schooler student, so, yeah.
I wanted to ask if, it's been like a couple of years since there was the study done about the greenway between Tullahoma and Manchester, and I just wondered what the update is on that.
That, so are you talking about the mobility plan from two years ago?
I think so.
Okay, in terms of funding for it, or?
Well, I just don't, I remember going to the presentations, both here and in Manchester, and I haven't stepped up the progress, so I just wanted to ask.
So really what it comes down to is, if things haven't moved, it's because the city board hasn't put money toward funding it as of yet, but in all seriousness, it's going to be taken into account mostly, because right now we're doing the comprehensive development plan, I think I spoke with, I told you all about this last time, but, which we're hoping that you all will be a part of and come to the meetings. The comprehensive development plan is taking into account the mobility plan, as well as the streetscape, and there's one other plan that we got from TDOT. So when they're putting those plans together, which we just funded, I think, last board meeting, the contractors that we've hired, the, they will be able to look at what we got from that, so, and pull that information to try to tie it all in, to give us recommendations on how to move forward. A lot of these things that we get, we get these plans, but we don't really, you know, we have to fund them. So shop local, build houses.
Shop local.
Anything else? Okay, great, thanks, y'all.
Thank you so much, lots of great things going on with the city, too. Okay, personnel report, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, the personnel changes for May have been presented to you in the BOE Connect via an attachment.
Thank you. Monthly financial report, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. You have there in your packet an updated FY21 report through the end of April, so that's 10 of the 12 months of the fiscal year there in front of you. As most of you are aware, the city sales tax has been positive this year, even above estimated revenues, which is positive both for the city and for the school system as well. As it relates to the school system, it's positive in the, in the number of six, about 6.12%. So that's, it's tremendous to be in that direction and not, and not less than expected. Additionally, we've collected about 97% of our estimated revenue from property tax through 10 months, so we anticipate meeting or exceeding that number over the next two months of the fiscal year. In the way of expenditures, there's nothing outstanding or out of, out of the way to mention, and I will be glad to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ray, excellent. Before we adjourn, I just want to take a moment to thank all of you board members, thank you so much. It has really, really, really been a great school year. Of course, we're not finished. We get busy, we get really busy in the summer, there's lots of stuff going on, it's going to be different this year, thank goodness. Last, last summer's busy was COVID-related, and hopefully that's not going to be the case this summer, but, but you all are really, really so appreciated. It is an honor to serve with all of you, and I just wish everybody a wonderful, wonderful summer, and also to the rest of our school system, just how wonderful you all are and how much I appreciate you. Great, great, great. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion by Teresa Lawson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy Johnson, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn? Meeting adjourned, thank you.